All right, let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 at 6:07 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton Pigly Wiggly, Milton City Hall in Hometown Ace Hardware.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance. Okay. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody signed in? We do have Zachary Berg signed in. Okay, come on up to the podium, first and last name and address. Do you want to comment now or at discussion point 23? Okay. All right. We have, I'm gonna read through all of, not like read through, but I'm gonna share with you the proclamations, and I'm gonna read through one in particular. So this week, we're proclaiming, the mayor's proclaiming Clean Air Month, Professional Municipal Clerks Week, Historic Preservation Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, National Police Week, Public Service Recognition Week, National Teacher Appreciation Week. And I just want to do a shout out to, like, it's National Nurse Month, too. But I do want to read Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Jenny also has completed her certified. She's a certified Wisconsin municipal clerk. And congratulations. Jenny has gone above and beyond, and we're really proud of her. And so I'm gonna read this proclamation. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, I mean, oldest, but not Jenny in years. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk services serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state provincial. County and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do recognize the week of May 5th through the 11th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Jenny Solo, and to all professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And I want to do the National Police Week, too. I know, but I had the wrong agenda. And whereas police services provided in the City of Milton play an integral part in the everyday life of community members, and whereas the dedicated men and women who on a daily basis protect us, defend us, and serve as guardians are highly trained and committed to public safety, and whereas the support, trust, and cooperation of an involved community is vital to the efficient and effective operation of community policing practices and programs. And whereas the health, safety, and quality of life in this community greatly depends on those programs, services, and employees providing them, whereas the City of Milton Police Department incorporates modern day community policing practices focusing on their role as guardians by proactively engaging our community to create unity, build and sustain trust, and enhance the overall safety of the City of Milton. And whereas all members of the City of Milton Police Department recognize and take seriously their sworn duty to serve the community by safeguarding life and property, protecting all against violence and disorder, and working in partnership to enhance public safety, and whereas we proudly honor and pay tribute to the ultimate sacrifice of past law enforcement officers throughout the country, while gratefully acknowledging the daily sacrifices of our present officers. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 18th as National Police Week in the City of Milton, and call upon all community members to appreciate the contributions which these officers make every day to our health and safety and quality of life. And I also want to brag that our police department is accredited and has been for several, well, I go three years, right?
Tenth year of accreditation since 2014.
And so they go through an accreditation process, is it every two or three years?
Every three.
Every three years. So for the past 10 years, they have gone through an accreditation process every three years, and they have always done extremely well. And I want you to know that not every police department is accredited. Right? That's a choice that our police department makes to have a high quality of professionalism for the residents of this community. So you not, I was shocked that not everybody goes to the accreditation process, and that really speaks highly about our department, our officers, and our leadership within that department, both past and current. So we should be very proud of them. And you know, they've had a lot of different issues come up the past few months that have been new, and they've been difficult, and they have done a great job. And I receive very few complaints about our police department. I think our community supports them, and our, our council and our staff support them as well. And we appreciate everything that we do, and we appreciate the sacrifices that they make. So congratulations. Okay. Back to, number 12, right? Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved. Same.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a subdivision by certified survey map, rezoning the parcel from M2 Industrial District to SP Special Purpose District, and a conditional use permit request to allow for concrete manufacturing.
The city has offered, received an offer to purchase a site in the Crossroads Business Park from Advanced Concrete. One of the stipulations is they be permitted to build and operate an indoor concrete manufacturing facility. The City of Milton has been in negotiations with Advanced Concrete to purchase approximately 14 acre site in the Crossroads Business Park. The zoning code allows for concrete manufacturing in SP zoning with a conditional use permit. There would be no fiscal impact to the City of Milton for this rezoning. The development of the land, however, will result in additional tax base for Ted. No. 9 within the City of Milton. Following a public, or excuse me, city administration recommends the common council, Baker, excuse me, common council approved the CSM, approved the rezoning from M2 to SP, and then provide a conditional use permit for the parcel west of, end of Putnam Parkway. And attached are the CSM, the conditional use permit application, the conditional use permit finding of tax, and the CSM. I will mention that the planning commission did make a positive recommendation on all three of these motions to approve for the city council.
And do you want us to do these in three motions, too?
Please.
And is that rezone, CUP, CS?
It would be, it would be CSM, rezone, then CUP, and then passing the ordinance.
Okay, see it again, CSM first?
CSM.
Yep.
Then it would be the ordinance for the rezone.
Ordinance.
And then it would be the conditional use.
And then CUP. All as separate motions. Everybody got that? Any questions or comments? I, I do want to say that at planning, a couple folks had really good questions. They were answered satisfactorily, and they voted unanimously.
I would move approval of the certified survey map for, and get the name of the company right here, Advanced Concrete. That's the first part. Same.
There's a motion and a second. Any, anything, questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Believe secondly, I would move approval of, the ordinance number here is ordinance 534. Is that 2024, 534? Is that appropriate?
Correct.
For Advanced Concrete.
And?
Like to.
And, yeah, approve the first reading, waive the second and third and adopt.
Same.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. And next.
And the third piece here, I would move approval of the conditional use permit for Advanced Concrete, for the parcel at the west end of Putnam Parkway contingent on the sale of the property.
Is there a second?
Same.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, then that's it for that order of business. Discussion and possible action on ordinance 2024-533, creating Chapter 70, Article 7, regarding ATV/UTV operation within the City of Milton.
The city has been working on this ordinance for quite some time now. Staff has developed an ordinance to allow for ATVs and UTVs to be operated on municipal streets. As requested by the city council, insurance will be required of those operators. Operating hours will be between 5:00 AM and 10:00 PM. All operators will be required to hold a driver's license. All ATVs will be required to have four wheels. The ordinance does include a sunset clause, and the council will need to take action one year later to continue the ordinance. There will also be discussions six months after passage to update the council on the ordinance. For fiscal impact signage is being purchased by the Rock County Crawlers Club. The city will encourage staff cost to install the signs and replacement sign cost when needed. Approval, recommended motion is approval of recommended ordinance language. Enactment of this ordinance requires a first, second, and third reading and a motion to adopt. If the council prefers, the second and third reading may be waived at the same time. The first reading is completed.
Questions or comments? Or a motion?
I would also like to make it clear that this ordinance would take into effect 30 days after it is adopted. That gives us time to purchase and install the signs, and just make that clear to the public. Also, it'd be 30 days after the adoption of this ordinance.
So if we adopted it tonight, it would be June 7th?
Correct.
I moved approve the recommended ordinance language.
And?
Enactment of an ordinance, waive the second and third reading and a motion to adopt.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Is there anyone opposed? All right, you have an ordinance, UTV years and UTV years. So let's make this work. Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding residential exterior improvement program requests. These were reviewed by the Community Development Authority, and one thing I can say is that the CDA reviews these, so like, they take their time, they're very thoughtful, and these are the recommendations that they have brought forward. And how many recall, do we do these all in one motion as presented, or do we do them individually? Anybody want to help me on that?
Do we give people a chance if they, in the audience, to respond to these, the findings of the CDA?
If they have signed up for a public comment, or they want to comment, then they can comment, come up and say their first and last name and their address.
I think we've approved these in bulk before.
In bulk before, okay.
And when we've had ones that we were not, were not approving, we've also included that.
Okay. All right, does anyone want to come up on the public comment? Okay, so you have the list of all of the applications, and those that are recommended to be approved, and those that aren't.
Do we have listed here, aren't these just the ones that are up for approval?
In the memo.
Oh, in the memo, okay.
Maybe for clarification, I can read the ones, sorry, read the ones that were, that were recommended for approval. 608 East High Street in the amount of $4,343. Roger Street in $5,000. 22 East Evergreen Lane in the amount of $5,637. 637 College Street, $3,000. 62 North Janesville Street in the amount of $3,500. And 28 Division Street in the amount of $4,500. And the two that the Community Development Authority recommended for denial was 19 East Madison Avenue and 31 East Basswood Lane.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve the residential exterior improvement grants for 608 East High Street, 343 Roger Street, 22 East Evergreen Lane, 637 College Street, 62 North Janesville Street, and 28 North, uh, 28 Division Street.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. And that grant is fully used now. Okay, and then go ahead for the.
Also making motion to deny the residential exterior improvement grants for 19 East Madison Avenue and 31 East Basswood Lane based off the reasoning in the memo.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion discussion and possible action regarding funding Lakeside Fire East Division.
The city, when it joined Lakeside Fire and Rescue, committed along with other members of the East Division, the towns of Harmony, Johnstown, Lima, and Milton, to hiring nine employees to staff the new fire station. The Fire District is looking to fund three employees from July 1st onward, and to hire three interns to begin the training process. Lakeside Fire and Rescue is moving ahead with the construction of the new fire station, including an east and west Milton station. The East Division has committed to staffing the additional station. This is composed of nine employees. The Fire District has requested to fund three staff for the East Division starting July 1st, along with the three permanent staff. Lakeside Fire and Rescue has a successful training and recruitment program utilizing interns. The interns learn on the job and within three years are fully trained and licensed. Lakeside Fire Rescue is proposing to hire three interns as of July 1st to begin the process to staff the new fire station. In order to have staff trained and ready to work for Lakeside Fire Rescue when the second Milton station opens in 2026, 2027, it's advisable to begin staffing now. Fiscal impact, the full time employees will cost the city $51,756.50 for the rest of 2024, and $103,513 for 2025. The interns will cost the city $400, or excuse me, $4,935 for the rest of 24, and $30,763 for 2025. When it dissolves, half of the Milton Fire District's funds belong to the City of Milton, and using these funds will allow the city to pay for these hires with no impact on the general fund expense in 2024, and a minimal impact in 2025 of $9,751.92. Recommend motion is to have Milton Fire release funds for 2024 hires and interns on behalf of the city. I have also included in their balance sheet for Milton Fire District the Lakeside Fire Rescue over hire funding numbers that was presented by Chief Pickering, and the City of Milton Fire and Rescue employee funding breakdown, financial breakdown.
Questions or comments?
I assume this is something we'll have to figure out for 2026, though, how we're gonna handle residential staffing?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe it was the intention when the council joined the Lakeside Fire District that we'd be applying that new construction over the next three years to those funding positions.
And some of the, and I'm not committing a council or a mayor to anything, to anything, but some of the new funding, or I don't know if I call it new funding, or the increased shared revenue based on sales tax, that is restricted to how, how we can use it. So we can use it for police, we can use it for GPW, and we can use it for fire. So those funds can, if a future council so chooses, be applied to these positions as well. Correct? But again, I am not committing those funds. I'm just saying that there, there are funding sources. And what I would suggest to future councils is to, you know, not fund, take all that money for one thing. Like, I think it should be available to DPW, to police, you know, to fire. Like, it shouldn't be all just put in one pot for one segment, because the intention is not to exclude any department that that funding is eligible to be spent.
I would move that we authorize the Milton Fire to release the funds for 2024 hires and interns in the amount of $51,756.50 for the rest of 2024, and $103,513 for 2025.
Is there a second?
Same.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2024-05, approving street name change in the Red Hawk Farms subdivision.
In 2018, the plan for Red Hawk Farms was approved. Recently, the Rock County Mapping Department discovered that Red Hawk Drive was incorrectly labeled as Red Hawk Lane. This proposed resolution corrects this error. There is one existing home on the property around the road, but the address will not be affected. The Plan Commission reviewed this item at their meeting tonight and provided a recommendation to the Common Council to approve Resolution 2024-05 renaming Red Hawk Lane to Red Hawk Drive.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve Resolution 2024-05.
Same.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Presentation of 2023 Consumer Confidence Report.
This is a requirement of the DNR to publish or make public our consumer confidence report annually for our water system. This is just one of the means that we do that. We also make it available by publishing it in the newspaper. There's no action required. Just again, a public presentation here tonight. If there's any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Okay. Discussion and possible action on amending the listing contract for Crossroad Business Park.
Since 2014, the city signed a contract with CBC Maguire Meers and Associates to sell parcels in the Crossroad Business Park. It's time to renew. They've been doing this for 10 years. Currently, we have got two parcels remaining in Crossroad Business Park, with one having an offer pending, purchase pending, city council's approval. And then we do have one left. We do have an option to purchase land with CBC Maguire Meers and Associates. From my knowledge, they've been doing a very good job representing us and selling the business park in the wider business community throughout Wisconsin and the nation. It's a one year contract.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve amending the listing contract for the Crossroads Business Park for one year.
Same.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of a City of Milton Weed Commissioner, like, regular weeds.
Milton Code of Ordinance, Section 2-491, requires the mayor to appoint a weed commissioner and requires confirmation by a majority vote of the common council. The weed commissioner performs the duties listed in Section 26-72. City administration recommends the mayor appoint and the common council approve Code Enforcement Officer Blaine Larson as the weed commissioner for the city from May 7th, 2024 to May 5th, 2025.
I'll make the motion to approve Officer Blaine Larson as the code, as the weed commissioner for that period of time.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding purchasing a utility van for the water utility.
The water utility owns and operates a work van and a pickup for normal operation. The van that we're looking to replace tonight carries tools and equipment for use by the operators performing their normal routine work. This vehicle was purchased in 2009 and has just over 78,000 miles on it. We prepared a request for quotes for the vehicle and specifications requested by the water utility. It was provided to local dealerships. We did receive two quotes. The total amount was $59,440 and will be funded by the water utility. Disposal of the existing water van will be discussed at a future meeting, but it could be repurposed with some shuffling of the existing fleet to replace otherwise older vehicles with higher mileage yet. City administration recommends approving the purchase of the water utility van from Gordy Boucher, Florida to Janesville.
Questions or comments? Form?
I move to approve the purchase of the water utility van from Gordy Boucher Ford of Janesville.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion. I have to sneeze, and it's because of Paul. Discussion and possible action regarding the selection of the official city newspaper.
So each year, the City of Milton Common Council needs to make a section for the newspaper. This will, newspaper would be used for all notices, including legal notices, public hearings, minutes, and election notices. The two most feasible options are the Janesville Gazette and the Milton Courier. And based in previous years, the Gazette has been chosen. Uh, the Gazette is published daily, while the Milton Courier is published weekly. Uh, included in the memo, I put in the information of when we send something to a newspaper, how long it takes to be published. So the weekly newspaper, Milton Courier, one week prior to publications when I need to send it. Otherwise, Janesville Gazette, it is two business days prior to publication. Uh, it was two years ago that we switched this, um, and then at that point, the Town of Milton, Town of Harmony, Town of Johnstown, and the City of Janesville, uh, we go ahead and use, go together with, um, excuse me, for the election notices. So if we chose to go to Milton Courier, um, then we would just have a slightly increased amount for the year.
I make the motion to select the Gazette, Janesville Gazette as the, uh, city's paper.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Committee Commission and Election Official Appointments.
Mayor Welch has recommended the following appointments. So for a common council appointment, the tourism would be, uh, older person, Charlotte Walker. And then for citizen appointments, uh, we have for ethics board, Zachary Berg, Historic Preservation Commission, Zachary Berg again, and Linda Clark, and Board of Review, Edward Jacobson. And we do have, uh, Zachary Berg in the audience this evening.
Did you want to comment? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Zachary Bergs, uh, resident at eight seventy Parkview Drive here in Milton. Um, just wanted to give a formal introduction of myself to those who haven't met me. Um, those who remember me from last year, remember me for the whole chicken debacle, um, and all the jokes that flew out of that. Um, anyways, just trying to give a face to the name. So if you have any questions, comments, anything like that, then you can know who you're talking to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome. Okay, our next meeting date is May twenty-first, two thousand, what? Oh, oh, yeah, we need a motion.
I move to approve the appointment, uh, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, uh, Committee Commission and Election Official Appointments.
Is there a second?
Say it.
Um, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, there's our appointments. Okay, so.
You could say whatever you want.
Okay. Okay, so, um, we have a new meeting agenda order for today's meeting, and the next meeting day will be May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, because we like to switch things up. Um, the Linda Clark general items. Is it possible to do it on May twenty-first before the council meeting?
We can certainly do one of them. I'd like to have two meetings.
Okay. Do you want them in person, or can we do one by Zoom?
Is the Plan Commission gonna go up until six o'clock again next, uh?
No, it'll have to adjourn and then reconvene after the council meeting. And we can provide food.
Do you want a little break between the two?
Uh, so.
Three or four forty-five?
I can't promise for. I don't know exactly what our agenda for the planning division is gonna be.
Oh.
If my commission's.
I didn't know you had a meeting before.
Yeah, at four.
So I think, I mean, you can all come at four forty-five. And maybe we could have, like, the food ready for you.
There you go.
Right.
Maybe we could start at three?
We can start at three, if you want to do three o'clock.
Shouldn't let's do work.
Well, get on board with the retirements here.
We have a few years yet to go.
Um, so would, would first of all, May twenty-first work?
For now, yes.
Okay.
That's good.
And then what other date? So we could do that one in person, and do you want to do one the last week, like, by Zoom then? That would be the fourth week of May? Is that Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Then it's the day after Memorial Day.
Yeah, I.
Are you looking for staff and council?
Yes.
I am out that last weekend, May.
Thank you.
Then, then you need to be here. I have, I have no authority.
You can't do the twenty-first? Jenny and I aren't heartbroken.
Well, could one be with council and one be with staff and council, or no? I mean, I, it's fine if it has to be staff and council.
I prefer to, it's gonna be an informal meeting where we're really just gonna have discussions.
Okay, okay. But not the twenty-first anymore, right?
Are you?
What? Okay. Um.
We could do the twenty-second.
Can we do early morning on the twenty-first? Can we do breakfast? No.
Does that fit your schedule right?
Yeah, with that.
If it's, I, I should be able to make that work if it's good for everybody else.
For a breakfast meeting.
Okay, I've got an eight o'clock, but.
So nine?
Six.
Nine.
Nine o'clock?
Can you do that, Bill?
Sure.
That would be here. And then the other one, could we do? By Zoom, we could do on the sixteen, or we could do the.
I'm gone, starting the twenty-fourth through the end of the month.
Okay. Do the twenty-third.
By Zoom, I can do it by Zoom.
Uh, I, I am out, Dante.
What about the twentieth at noon, by Zoom? I know you have a leadership meeting, I know that, but I'm, is that important, that leadership meeting?
They're all important.
I mean.
They're all important.
Can you do your leadership meeting at eleven?
The leadership meeting can change, yes.
I mean, I, but if there's something that.
No, I need that leadership meeting.
I mean, that's what I thought, but I didn't want to put words into it, or assume, or direct, or if there's something that.
Currently, the twentieth I'm free all day, because I have a day off, but yes.
Should we do that one?
Well, it doesn't matter, I, you know, I have to. I think the twentieth by Zoom would be better, because I don't know what time I'll be driving back. There's gonna be cake? On the twentieth?
Twentieth and the twenty-first.
Okay, but, and the twenty-first, we said at nine AM, and then Zoom.
Or just do both in person.
I can up here by Zoom, though, right?
Yes.
Yes, I will sound down invites once we decide on the day.
Thank you.
Is this continuing upon Alderman Stockman?
Yes. No, if he doesn't show up, it's his fault.
That's what happens when you don't show up, people schedule your schedule for you. Yes, and we can sign him to a personal meeting with Paul if he doesn't show up for you.
The twentieth by Zoom at noon, and the twenty-first in person at nine AM here.
Correct.
Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
Yes. Does it? Yes, yep, yeah.
You're absolutely welcome to join.
And we don't get brunch, breakfast, if we do the nine AM.
The first one isn't.
Why can't we have brunch?
One's lunch and one's brunch.
This is the best we can do right now. I feel like Linda's still haunting us with those general items. Anybody else for general item?
Still worried Living History Days is next weekend. So seventeen eighth to nineteenth, seventeenth is a school day, as it is every year, and the eighteenth and nineteenth is Living History Event.
And it's free.
It's free. It's free to the public, and we will actually, as a last minute addition, be having US Color Troops again. They're coming back, and we'll also be having cavalry this year with horses, possible, quite possibly, like, very good.
Is that, like, within our ordinance?
It's private land.
Okay.
It, yeah.
Anything else for anybody under that? Any committee reports? I know that Eric attended his first library meeting, and we can talk about him through, um, Ashley, when she does her report. But I did talk to Eric, and he did say it went really well, he learned a lot, he's impressed, so there's that. Any, um, other committee meetings? Okay, um, staff reports. Anybody wanna?
Uh, we had a very successful food truck rally on Sunday. The weather was absolutely perfect. All the trucks showed up, and it was just really, really fun to see our story garden space being used by everybody. Um, we probably had over fi- four hundred people, I think, and made about a thousand dollars for the library. So it was probably one of our favorite, or best food truck rallies we've had recently, so. Um, our summer programming is gonna be released next week. We have tons of fun things planned, um, for the summer. We have snakes coming, we have musicians, and a whole bunch of other fun stuff. And we are also working on our strategic plan process. Um, we'll, we're gonna, um, we're doing our own one, and, um, we're gonna be starting focus groups and fun stuff like that. So very excited for the library, determine what we can do for the next five years.
Great. Um, anybody else wanna volunteer?
My light's red, so I'll go. Um, we, uh, are, we've made a conditional offer for our new officer to replace Peter Miller, who left us. Tom Lloyd, a little sad still about that, um, but regardless, uh, he's nearing completion of the process, uh, albeit acceptance into the academy and, uh, completion. So the downside to this is we won't get an officer ready to go until next May, essentially, once they're solo. So they wouldn't really join our ranks until end of this year. Um, that and our newest squad to join our fleet should be, it's built, it's getting graphic. And, um, that'll have a new design compared to what we've been rolling out in the years past. So there will be a transition of our squads to the new design then, over the next several years. It's cost a lot of money to do that initially, so it'll be a slow roll. Um, so it may look a little, like a kid getting dressed in the morning without their mom's help, might be a little wishy-washy at first. Um, so that'll be exciting to look for that. That'll probably hit the streets, probably middle of the summer, though. Um, other than that, we did finish up, um, another successful two months of reading at the library. Um, it's going really well, so I'm thankful that the library staff has been welcoming cops into their building to help. Uh, they're, they're basically helping us read too, though. Um, but reading to the kids, though, it's a good, uh, bridge builder for us, so we're excited to continue that throughout the summer months as well. Other than that, nothing too else is happening on our side.
That's good. Jenny, or Paul, or Mark, or Kelsey?
I can go. So, I, you may have heard, there's been some alcohol beverage licensing changes, uh, in the state of Wisconsin, Act seventy-three, and there has, this is going to be a tiered rollout. So, for example, there was some new forms that were put out for licensing, um, there was different restrictions changed. Um, and so now, one of the big ones is, for example, Northleaf Winery, uh, is now a state permit versus a local permit, uh, permitting. So they are similar to what now Good Works Brewing is, um, for their brew pub. And so this will be continuous, because we'll be bringing back some, uh, updates to this as the Department of Revenue continues to do some interpretations, and we see what other communities are doing, uh, Class C wine licenses. There's been some new changes to that of who is eligible for those, uh, so we'll be bringing that information, uh, to the council. And then also, with the new forms that were rolled out, these are completely different forms, and we have had some great feedback from them. Um, so I was a little bit concerned if, because these forms came out on April first, and we usually have our forms out in middle of February, early March, uh, but everyone has been great, so I really wanna, um, say how amazing some of our businesses are in town that are, that are working through this. And then also, Board of Review, uh, we will have our first meeting on May twenty-second. So we are not having the full two-hour Board of Review until August twenty-first, because of the fact that they are, it is a full reevaluation, so our assessor is working through that. Uh, but based on state statute, we do need to have our first meeting. Uh, so they're expecting to have information out by the end of June, uh, so open book will be from July first to August first. It's a month long, uh, because the assessor can be contacted anytime, so we're not limiting it to only a couple hours. Paul, did you want to go?
Um, currently, we do have our strategic plan questionnaire out to the public. Um, we've received over a hundred and fifteen responses so far. Um, that has been posted on our social media, on our website. Um, it will be going out in our newsletter. Um, getting some really good feedback, a lot of really good data, so I'm really excited about that.
Kelsey?
Um, a couple weeks ago now, I went to the Treasurer's Conference, learned some great information that I look forward to bringing back and implementing here. And then I have been working with the auditors to finalize the audit. We're in the home stretch of that, so that should be coming out here shortly. Otherwise, business is your role.
Um, we hosted the Arbor Day Tree Planning, uh, tree planting at, uh, Crossridge Park, King Park, and then, um, fifth grade class, uh, came over from Northside to plant trees at the public works facility. There was also planting at the library. And our well, um, rehab project is out to bid right now, so we should receive bids back, and you'll see that here at a future meeting.
And the library videotaped. So if you want to look at everything that happened on Arbor Day, there's a video for that. Okay, team building, exercise. What? I don't know if I already did this already, but because things are tiring lately. What is your favorite summer food that you're looking forward? What is your favorite summer food that you're looking forward to? And maybe you already had it at the food truck rally, or maybe you're going to have it at Community Days or?
Watermelon.
Charlotte, my mic was on.
Hot dogs all the way.
Brats. Burgers on the grill.
My uncle makes beer brats for Fourth of July, and I look forward to them every year.
Smoked brisket.
Sweet corn.
I want rhubarb, anything rhubarb. I'm looking at a nut here. Can you just let her know that? I would like some sort of sweet form.
She makes a pretty decent rhubarb crisp.
I'll take it.
Awesome. Ice cream. Doesn't matter what kind. Just ice cream.
Did you go, Jenny?
No, I did not.
And Ryan? You did. So everybody along this side, the marks are the holdout. Zach! Everybody in the audience has to participate in team building. That was in the contract you signed to be a volunteer.
And we're all the ethics committee together, so now you have to participate, so.
It's summer food you're looking forward to. Oh, okay, that constitutes a food group in Wisconsin.
That's a sandwich in a can right there.
Can I just say fair food?
Yes, you can. Is that your answer?
Fair food.
Spoken like a true attorney.
All right, anybody else in the audience, or Mark?
Yeah, I would say, yeah. It doesn't, doesn't matter. It's, it's, no, it's brats and sauerkraut, yeah.
The attorney has ruled that repetition is acceptable in team building. No, but Kelsey, Kelsey said that she couldn't go because all of hers were taken, and then our attorney said it didn't matter.
Right. I had my microphone on three times, and then it was taken. So I'll repeat and go with watermelon, corn on the cob, and anything with rhubarb.
There's my people. So next time, Kelsey needs to go first.
Pam, what's your favorite?
Most will remember that. Oh, Jenny's going to put it in the minutes. All official. Kelsey's going first next time for team building. Anyone else in the audience care to?
Come on, Pam, what's yours?
Thank you for not saying beer. Thank you. Right, we all started sixth. Tacos. Good job, you guys. So for our strategic planning meals, we know what to plan for.
Beer and brats?
Beer and brats. Breakfast food of champions. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned until we meet again, like, for breakfast.